He makes me feel good.
Do we, Ryan and, okay, they should both be coming? All right, we'll give them another couple of minutes. Oh, the overview? Okay, I think Councillor Canal will be here in a moment, but since it is 9:33, good morning, I call the meeting of the Climate, Resilience and Land Use Committee to order. It is Thursday, December 11th at 9:33 a.m. Diego, could you please call the roll?
Good morning, Avalos?
Here.
Canal? Ryan?
Here.
Murillo?
Here.
Novick?
Here.
Claire, could you please read the statement of conduct?
Good morning and welcome to the meeting of the Climate, Resilience and Land Use Committee. To testify before this committee in person or virtually, you must sign up in advance on the committee agenda at portland.gov/council/agenda/climateresilienceandlandusecommittee or by calling 311. Registration for virtual testimony closes one hour prior to the meeting. In-person testifiers must sign up before the agenda item is heard. If public testimony will be taken on an item, individuals may testify for three minutes unless the chair states otherwise. Your microphone will be muted when your time is over. The chair preserves order. Disruptive conduct such as shouting, refusing to conclude your testimony when your time is up, or interrupting others' testimony or committee deliberations will not be allowed. If you cause a disruption, a warning will be given. Further disruption will result in ejection from the meeting. Anyone who fails to leave once ejected is subject to arrest for trespass. Additionally, the committee may take a short recess and reconvene virtually. Your testimony should address the matter being considered. When testifying, please state your name for the record. If you are a lobbyist, identify the organization you represent. And finally, virtual testifiers should unmute themselves when the clerk calls your name. Thank you.
Thank you, Claire. We have four items on our agenda today. We're going to hear an overview of large-scale development sites from development staff in several bureaus. We'll have a property annexation ordinance, which I believe reflects our most recent successes in the ongoing war with Gresham. And finally, we'll hear a presentation on the Parks Levy key performance indicators. First, we need to adopt committee minutes for the month of October, and I'm informed that I do not need to ask Diego to read this item, so I will simply say that I will simply ask if we have any objection to adopting the minutes from the October 9th and October 23rd Climate, Resilience, Land Use Committee by unanimous consent. Is there any objection? Without objection, the minutes are approved. Diego, will you please read the next item?
Item two, large-scale development sites.
Thank you. So we have staff from several bureaus here with an overview of the city's large-scale development sites. In addition to staff presenting today, there's a number of staff experts in the room to answer questions. So, go ahead.
Good morning, Chair Novick, councillors. Patricia Deefendorf for the record, Chief Planner, Bureau of Planning and Sustainability. I'm going to take a moment to share my screen, share the presentation. Okay, I think we should be able to see the presentation now, hopefully. On the large screen, there we go, great. So, good morning, and thank you. I'm here with colleagues from Parks, PBOB and Prosper. We are here today to provide updates on a number of large-scale development projects that are in various stages of planning and development, both within the central city and elsewhere in the city. I'd like to invite other presenters to briefly introduce themselves before we begin.
Lauren McGuire, Portland Parks and Recreation Asset and Development Director.
Art Pearce, Deputy Director of Planning, Projects and Programs at the Portland Bureau of Transportation.
Good morning, councillors, I'm Lisa Abwaf, Director of Development and Investment with Prosper Portland.
Okay, trying to advance the slides, let's see. There we go, all right. These are the projects that we'll be covering today. You are probably aware of all of these projects, and you may be more familiar with some than others. We appreciate this opportunity to provide updates on the concurrent efforts by many bureaus of the city to advance these projects, many of which are public-private partnerships with multiple partners, as you will see later in the presentation. Each of these are catalytic projects on their own, and together they will transform the city, bringing needed housing, creating destinations that attract visitors, revitalizing the city's economy and leveraging private development. Many of these projects also implement strategies of the Housing Production Strategy, just wanted to kind of mention that, or actions. For example, Housing Production Strategy C1 is to implement and support catalytic projects, of which many of these are the catalytic projects that are mentioned in the Housing Production Strategy. Other actions of the Housing Production Strategy that are advanced by this, these range of projects are C2, increasing housing capacity in inner centers and corridors; C4, kickstarting housing demand in Central City; C5, increasing housing capacity in the Central City; and C6, promoting increased transit service. So we're going to start with an overview of Central City projects. The first project we're going to talk about is the OMSI District. You can see on this slide some images and renderings of the project. The OMSI District is located on the east side of the Willamette River. It is envisioned to be a new mixed-use community anchored by the Oregon Museum of Science and Industry and the Center for Tribal Nations. It will include residential, commercial and open space uses. A city technical advisory committee with staffing funded via various sources is coordinated by Prosper Portland and has been supporting the implementation of the project since early OMSI District planning efforts. There are many bureau partners, or many partners, that include Prosper Portland, PBOB, BES, Water bureaus, and then OMSI Metro and the tribal communities. The 24-acre district is centered around properties owned by a few property owners, including OMSI, Portland Community College, a PGE, with OMSI being the majority property owner. Development is anticipated to occur over multiple phases and will create 1,200 housing units, including both market-rate and affordable housing, and 11,000 new jobs. The Central City 2035 Plan laid the land use groundwork for this project and re-zoned many of the properties around the Orange Line from industrial to a more flexible central employment zone, which allows for a greater mix of uses, including housing and hotel. A master plan for the district was approved by the Portland Design Commission in 2023. In 2024, Prosper Portland and the city entered into a partnership agreement with OMSI that speaks to various phases for implementing the master plan. The agreement also involves the construction of significant new infrastructure and public amenities to serve the new housing and commercial uses in OMSI, which my colleagues can speak to.
An important piece of the community infrastructure is a new active waterfront and a greenway trail along the Willamette River. The Portland Parks and Recreation part of the project is including the renovation and construction of the waterfront trail through the OMSI project and potential shared public spaces as well, that would be part of that. We're also working in partnership with BES on a stormwater mitigation area, which will become the waterfront education park. Our commitment to the trail is $3 million of SDC money, and site construction is going to be, you're going to hear the timeline coming up, it's going to be at a later phase in the OMSI development.
For transportation, the lion's share of the transportation infrastructure happened as a push alongside the Orange Line, light rail line, with the Tillicum Crossing, the connection of the streetcar loop, and relocation of Water Avenue to match in with that, as well as trail connections to connect eastside neighborhoods to the Tillicum Crossing. The remaining element, primary remaining element, is additional relocation of Water Avenue to help create stronger development sites surrounding the existing OMSI museum area. And so, PBOB has been working in partnership with OMSI and with Prosper and other bureaus on developing the design and then the construction and funding plan for that project, and so that's still underway.
Then I'll close this out. Prosper's early role was actually to help coordinate across bureau team in our negotiations of partnership agreement that was ultimately approved by council last year with OMSI that did commit to some of those funding elements for different projects. And this partnership agreement also outlines three phases of development, happy to share a copy of that if you're interested in diving in further, as well as the city contributions to the individual projects that are contemplated over those three phases. And the two things that I would highlight from a development perspective is near term. OMSI is working with Edlin &amp; Co. and, as well as Hacienda CDC on what they call Track A, which is kind of right off of Water Avenue, for an approximately 100-unit affordable housing project. That project has just recently moved into early pre-development. So, Hacienda and Edlin &amp; Co. are moving that forward with the goal of starting in late 2026 into 2027 under construction. Another project that I would want to highlight is the work that the Northwest Native Chamber has been doing in pursuing site acquisition for our Center for Tribal Nations. Good news is they are making great progress on actually moving into acquisition of a property. And then the last thing I would highlight, in terms of that partnership agreement, it does contemplate about 250,000 square feet of new development occurs as part of Phase One before we move into Phase Two, which starts to look at broader district needs, particularly from a transportation and a parking perspective, to free up some of the surface lots that OMSI has critical need of today. And over the next 15 to 20 years, OMSI estimates that the total economic impact of their vision is $1.2 billion of economic output. Next slide, please. So now we're going to move into the timeline. Some of the things that I wanted to highlight, I think you see a lot of the elements, we felt like it was important to provide you a lot of the background and kind of forward-looking, but some of the key elements that I would highlight here is some of what Art mentioned around New Water Avenue. Kind of the really immediate push is around putting together a full funding package in support of OMSI around New Water Avenue, and then moving that project into, into design and ultimately construction, and identifying kind of clearly who leads on that, whether that's the city or OMSI. There was a pretty significant contribution of the last generation of tax agreement finance, just under $11 million, to helping with that New Water Avenue improvements, as well as a pretty significant state contribution that's come through lottery funds and site infrastructure funds. And then also just wanted to highlight, because these may be actions that have already come before council, I believe, the Water Avenue recently, or the Water Bureau recently closed on a piece of property to support the Willamette Crossing project, and a portion of that property will ultimately service some of the infrastructure needs that Art mentioned. And then again, we'll continue to work closely with both, with both Hacienda and Edlin &amp; Co. as well as PHB to just track what's happening with the affordable housing project. And with that, I will hand it back to Patricia.
Great. All right, so the next project is the Lower Albina Rose Quarter Project, and once again, you can see some renderings, like a bird's eye view of the, of a community investment plan that I'll tell you more about, and some renderings of the project. So for this, Albina Vision Trust Community Investment Plan is at the heart of the vision for the Lower Albina and Rose Quarter areas. AVT formed as a nonprofit in 2017. In 2018, they were awarded a metro planning grant for $385,000, and the city added an additional $75,000 via Prosper to support the community engagement process necessary to create a catalytic plan for the Albina area. AVT did so, and they conducted a robust community engagement process, leading with the Black community and with the city in partnership. From this engagement, the trust established a 50-year vision plan. There are a lot of elements to this plan. It represents 94 acres in Lower Albina. It has three main components focusing on land use, wealth creation and governance, and it would include future uses such as housing, commercial, cultural and educational open space uses. The property included is currently privately owned, with the exception of the Blanchard Site, for which AVT has an offer for purchase. That's the, the development of the PPS Profit Site would be a residential community with as many as 1,200 units, and along with renovation investments at the Moda Center and Veterans' Memorial Coliseum and future activation around the venues that will, it will support a growing residential community and a vibrant entertainment district in the area. The city has been supporting this work in a number of ways, including a city technical advisory committee that has been assisting AVT with the implementation specifically around preparing to develop an application, a master plan, a Central City Master Plan application for the 10-acre Profit Site. The city's been providing data and mapping resources, responding to city policy and zoning questions, organizing opportunities for bureau and staff leadership to meet with AVT to offer guidance on the plan. And BPS and Prosper have been participating in a monthly metro city meeting with AVT to discuss a grant. So the city and AVT have been working together on a district plan for the area with funding from an $800,000 federal Reconnecting Communities Grant. That Reconnecting Albina District Planning Process, as it's called, is, AVT is a, is part of the project team, supporting community engagement on that project. And the goal of that project is to create a land use, urban design and street network framework plans for the area that will facilitate the future implementation of their, the community investment plan, the long-term vision represented by that plan. This foundational work may also lead to a next phase, which is, there may be some Central City 2035 Plan or code changes that will be needed to help realize that vision and to integrate a planned highway cover in the Rose Quarter area into the area. So, as, along with AVT, of course, other key partners, as you can see on the slide, include the Oregon Department of Transportation, the Historic Albina Advisory Board and the Trail Blazers. The concurrent projects that are happening in that area involve the construction of significant new infrastructure and public amenities, which my colleagues can talk about further.
The AVT priorities that were heard through their community engagement process included building a community where Black Portlanders felt at home, building wealth among broad demographics, creating hubs that form a critical mass of uses like educational, health and food to serve the community, building a plan around Broadway for a lively Main Street, and then access to nature, the river and recreational open spaces. The Albina, the Albina Vision Investment Plan is similar to what BPS would consider a framework or a concept plan, as Patricia said. The organizing concepts are a close-knit neighborhood, activity hubs, food, education, arts and wellness, building types determined by the Black contracting community, a continuum of open spaces and the opportunity to strengthen the urban fabric around North Broadway. Also, housing, of course, central to the wealth-building component. PPNR is very supportive of the AVT plan and sees many beneficial aspects of the vision, particularly the creation of a new waterfront facing open space. It's described as a riverfront park with an arts hub. We have a couple items to work through with AVT currently. The access to the park is a little bit challenging, because it's a riverfront park and you have to cross over Union Pacific Railroad, and, and we also have some safety concerns for people if they have access to the river at that point. The topography is a little bit steep, and we have, we want to make sure it's activated with lots of housing. And we also, of course, have the challenge of future park funding for SDCs at the moment. We're also interested in partnership as the arts and culture facilities develop, because it is envisioned just west of the Veterans Memorial Coliseum, particularly as it relates to, to and collaborating with other existing parts, arts institutions, like the Interstate Firehouse Cultural Center that Parks is working in partnership with them on. And it also serves as the north and northeast Black community adjacent to Dawson Square Park on Interstate.
Great. Infrastructure sets the tone for a neighborhood, and Albina Vision envisions a neighborhood in which communities and family can come together and live comfortably and thrive. The street network, the public realm network, is not yet the backdrop for that vision. And so, PBOB has been working together with other bureaus and ODOT to try to reimagine the infrastructure framework for this area. And so the largest move among that is partnering with the I-5 Rose Quarter Project, in which there's both improvements to the mainline of the freeway, as well as surface improvements that include capping the freeway, including and creating local street connections and the framework for buildable space in that area. To complement that, PBOB has been leading an effort to create a new Main Street in Broadway and Widler that could become the armature of a new community, as well as working on developing the street grid that might be the, the sort of more finer-grain local street connections, such as what would anchor those 1,000-plus residents in the Blanchard Site redevelopment area. Each of those together have sort of their own journey. The main ones that we've been spending a lot of energy on right now is trying to support ODOT on their process. Actually, I have staff right now at the Oregon Transportation Commission, as they're having a hearing about how to proceed with the Rose Quarter Project. I'm sure you have read, with a loss of federal funds and a challenging at the statewide level, bringing together that scale of infrastructure is just all the more challenging right now. Also, for us, PBOB had received a $38 million grant to do the design and construction of Broadway and Widler. At that point, that, all but $5 million has been rescinded, so we have some funds to be able to proceed with the design, but we don't currently have the funding to do the capital construction. So we look forward to continuing to work with the partners, figure out how we can bring these elements together to create the backdrop for this future community.
Okay, and as Lauren mentioned, the concepts of community building and wealth building were really important components of the community vision for Lower Albina. I do want to note, we prepared this slide before 1803 had also announced their acquisition of the Silo, so I would lift them up as an important partner for us to add to that key partners list, and really excited to kind of see their vision for what can happen, both at the waterfront and at the Silo site. Again, kind of the vision is, is expected to occur via what is called hubs that center around things like education, entrepreneurship, health, food and the arts. We also know that housing is another important wealth-building component of the community vision for Lower Albina, and I want to also lift up the Portland Housing Bureau's work. I hope some of the District Two councillors had an opportunity to visit Albina One at its recent opening. PHB actually made a contribution of just over $14 million in metro housing bonds to that project, so there was an important contribution by the city, and it was a partnership between AVT and Edlin &amp; Co. The project actually opened earlier this year. It offers 94 units of family housing, and it also has programming by POIC that connects residents to important employment training and career placement services. And then last but not least, also wanted to lift up that we do in fact own a lot of property down in Lower Albina, particularly around the Moda Center and the Veterans Memorial Coliseum. As Patricia mentioned, there are pretty significant improvements occurring to VMC, and we are in active conversations with the new owners about the Trail Blazers transition and kind of the future of that, of that venue as well. If we go to the next slide in terms of timeline, again, I think the things we wanted to highlight here of just immediate and near-term activities for your awareness, I think as Art mentioned, I think he called it "infrastructure sets the setting, the stage for future development", I think a lot of the city's efforts and big lifts right now are certainly around the infrastructure and then largely taking on a support infrastructure and then largely taking on a supporting role for both AVT and 1803 Funds' activities down in Lower Albina as they move to acquire property or do some pre-development work, including a central city master plan on that site.
Great. So the next project we want to talk about is the Broadway Corridor. Again, always have to have some pretty pictures and renderings. So the Broadway Corridor development is located at the north end of the historic North Park blocks. It is a significant urban project aimed at transforming the downtown area and enhancing the city's infrastructure. The Broadway Corridor is envisioned as a vibrant mixed-use district that will connect Old Town, Chinatown, and the Pearl District neighborhoods. The project involves the redevelopment of the former USPS site and aims to create a high-density area with residents, employment, and signature city attractions, including significant open spaces. The USPS property is owned by Prosper, with the Housing Bureau owning Block 4 at Northwest Johnson and 9th Avenue. As part of the master plan for that site, Prosper Portland also undertook a robust community engagement process, working closely with a project steering committee and citywide The development is underway with various phases, including infrastructure improvements, workforce training, and affordable housing.
Within the Broadway Corridor development, PPNR is working on two different park blocks, actually. The new parks are centered in the dense urban, future urban, mixed-use development. The goals of the project collectively are a cohesive signature park sequence, a continuation of the North Park blocks, other compelling recreational amenities we hope to put into the park, increase, an increase in the urban tree canopy, engaging the community along the way, providing amenities that are for gathering and picnic spaces, art displays, and recreational courts, perhaps, and connecting the Green Loop. All these specific elements are determined through the planning and community engagement process with consideration of who is going to be living, working, and playing in the park. For Site 1, which is the park block that PNC A is adjacent to, the most northern of the park blocks, the first block, is a 30,000-square-foot site currently used as a surface parking for Pacific College of Art. It has, we have put, invested $8.8 million and are moving forward the project in that location. Our partners are all at the table here, in addition to, of course, PNC A. The North Park Block site is currently managed by Portland Parks, and we think this is going to be a catalyst for the project. We're in development now, and we're also looking at, conceptually, what the second park block site will look like. That's a more of a two-acre central open space that's going to be within the Central City, and that's where the Green Loop will come through it. From, the location is between Hoyt and Johnson, 8th and 9th. For that part of the project, it'll be about $11.4 million that we have dedicated to that, and eventually we'll have a great design for a park within the middle of the project. That site is under construct, or not under construction until later in the phase of the Broadway Corridor development, which, again, Lisa will talk about the timeline.
This, in this area, PBOT said my favorite time within the project, which is doing things. So we are building currently Northwest Johnson and Kearney. And after many years of working out the funding and financing stack and readying the site, so you can look out today and see active construction laying the groundwork on both Johnson and Kearney, and we have plans for future phases of street improvements once the development area is ready for that. Also, very active partner in the future planning for the Green Loop. This is one of the more complicated areas in the Green Loop, where we are transitioning from the ground plane up to meeting at the Y of the Broadway Bridge. And so there's a lot of transitions to be worked on, and at least previously contemplated that actually running along the roofline of some of the buildings to make that connection. So quite, quite a bit to be figured out in that next phase for that, but we're excited to be part of that effort as well.
And I will close this out. So as Art mentioned, I think the construction of Northwest Johnson becomes really important, both in terms of connecting Old Town and the front door of Union Station west to Jamison Park, but it also becomes really important in servicing new development. And the other exciting news is there are actually two development projects that are in the works. The first is, as Patricia mentioned, we actually co-purchased the property with Portland Housing Bureau. Portland Housing Bureau owns a block within the site, and we have a commitment to 720 units being affordable, whether that's through inclusionary housing or direct delivery by partners of PHB. That first of those is a partnership between Home Forward and Urban League that was selected via a competitive solicitation that the Portland Housing Bureau led. It will be a 14-story, 230 affordable apartments. I would also highlight, for this particular committee, it will be cross-laminated timber construction type with active ground floor use. As Lauren mentioned, the ground floor of the affordable housing project will literally abut the future park, so a really exciting opportunity for things like childcare and interaction with the park. And then on the Prosper-owned properties, what we are looking at in the near term is the block. If you go out today, you will see a street under construction, but it's the block just to the north of where the affordable housing project will be. We're in negotiations with Related Northwest and Melvin Mark around a 200 to 250-unit middle-income housing project, and we were also pleased to receive a competitive PSEF award of resources, which means it will be the first high-density housing project to also pursue net-zero energy. And in fact, we are also doing that in partnership with Constructing Hope and Oregon Tradeswomen to identify opportunities for green construction, workforce training opportunities, from infrastructure through to the affordable housing project, through to the Prosper's project. And if we go to the next slide, I'm going to do actually a little bit of a look back on this one. Maybe it's because I've been at this project for like 10-plus years at this point, and so I'm going to just kind of be in a moment of looking back and appreciating the time that we spent. So we've really spent the past 10 years moving from acquisition through what we call site preparation. So these are the really important components, like demolishing the main facility of the post office, relocating the post office's retail facility so those PO boxes continue to be available for residents in the Northwest District, through to working with, we actually have a Labor Management Community Oversight Committee who has stuck with us throughout the pandemic and construction of all the district projects. This is very similar to an apprenticeship committee we had in South Waterfront, to make sure that we, as a city, are hitting our construction equity goals. We work with them from bidding through to performance to make sure that our contractors are hitting construction equity goals. And that committee has been a really important partner, and again, has been meeting with us for probably the past five to seven years as volunteer partners, checking in with us on both BES and Waters installation of utilities in 9th Avenue to service future development now, and now on the PBOT project. And with that, I will hand it back to Patricia.
Okay. Thank you. So the next project is the Lloyd Center. The Lloyd Center has developed a conceptual master plan, which envisions positioning the 29-acre Lloyd Center site as a diverse, connected neighborhood with housing, retail, restaurants, entertainment venues, workspaces, and large, open community spaces. The conceptual master plan is the result of extensive market research, design study, and community input for over two years. It has been submitted in an application for a Design Advice Request, also known as a DAR, meeting with the City of Portland's Design Commission through Portland Permitting and Development, and will be followed by a formal Central City Master Plan land use application. The master plan envisions transforming the current inward-facing 1960s-era mall and surrounding parking lots into a mixed-use neighborhood that builds on Lloyd's long history as an active, lifestyle-oriented regional destination. The reimagined layout will be opened up to the surrounding communities by connecting into Portland's street grid with significantly improved transportation network for bikes, pedestrians, and cars. The conceptual design contemplates thousands of new residents tailored toward a range of income levels, as well as an array of active and experiential retail uses, including restaurants and entertainment venues. The plan also envisions the opportunity for a large, commercial office campus environment that would be, offer something different than what is the office that's in Central City, in addition to a significant amount of outdoor, open, and amenity space. And so, and it will also have some parking for residents and visitors and continue the presence of the ice skating rink, which is a longtime neighborhood favorite amenity. So with that, I'll turn it over to Lauren.
It's pretty exciting. The owners of the Lloyd Center Urban Renaissance Group and KKR Real Estate Finance Trust have assembled a really great team of renowned local and national firms to support the revitalization. CGF is the design firm, as you know, at the airport. Field Operations is a New York-based landscape architect and urban designer, a leading-edge landscape architect and urban design firm that designed the High Line. And also, they have recruited this lead work for approximately 20% of the property designated for open space, and they're trying to connect, as Patricia said, to the, to the fabric on the outside of the district, which is great. They want to connect to Holiday Park, which is our park. So it's a great new vision for the whole area, and there's been great interest also in activating Holiday Park. As you know, we've had some challenges there, the surrounding area. They would like to have positive activation there, so we're working with them on that as well.
Most of the infrastructure that's contemplated, bringing the street grid back into the current mall site, has been designed and I think is contemplated to be constructed with phases of development, so may not be a PBOT-led public infrastructure, but I think that's one we'll find out more as we get further into the design process together with the Central City Master Plan. The other major move that I can contemplate along this area is Northeast Multnomah, which currently is a decent street, could be a great street, could be a street that is really an anchor street for this corridor and really helping activate some of the other adjacent parcels to really see themselves in a compelling space. We have a decent current protected bike lane with planters and such, but we do have a design of where it could be really a landmark, sort of marquee street that would really be a destination within this area. And certainly, if you picture the concert venue being right on that corner, this is a space where it starts to create a presence of arrival and some aesthetics there. So we look forward to partnering as this starts to move into motion and figure out how to include Multnomah in that, that package of work.
Thanks, Art. So I know a number of you, I know Councilor Ryan and a number of your staff from D2 had an opportunity to join a recent tour of the Lloyd Holiday new TIF district, and we got to see, actually, kind of construction started on a new venue that's going in that is a partnership between AAG and Monki. It will be an approximately 4,000-seat venue that will be operating. We know that that project broke ground, just again, just this kind of a few months ago, they started with the demolition of the Nordstrom's, kind of the previous Nordstrom store, and this will be an important anchor for new construction and future development at Lloyd Mall, and they anticipate completing that in 2027. And if we go to the next slide, here, I would just highlight that what's running parallel to this, there are no public resources right now committed to this project. This is largely a privately-led effort, working in partnership with the city via CCMP, Central City Master Plan process, and then conversations with Parks about Holiday Park. But do you want to acknowledge that there is a conversation, a foot that will come back to you as part of any Lloyd Holiday TIF district investment? So you will have back before, before council in early 2026, an investment plan where they will certainly contemplate, not necessarily investment directly in this particular site, but in some of the infrastructure opportunities that both Lauren and Art addressed. And with that, I'll hand it back to Patricia.
Patricia, before you continue, I want to do a bit of a time check slash discussion. We had scheduled an hour for presentation and discussion, and you've got a number of projects to talk about, and it's already 10:09. So I just want to check with my colleagues. I mean, the other two things that we have scheduled today are this annexation, which I think could schedule 15 minutes, hopefully it might take 10, but then there's also discussion of Parks' key performance indicators, and I'm just sort of want to get a sense of the room. Do we, are we okay with cutting into the time for discussing of Parks' key performance indicators? Are we okay with not addressing all of the projects that are before us? How do we want to manage our time? Because I think we might have bitten off a bit more than we can chew.
Let me phrase one, like, sort of, choice question. Would you rather take the time, well, sort of three options. Would you rather just go through the presentation and not leave us much time for discussion on this topic? Would you rather cut off the discussion of projects, so we can just discuss the projects we've already heard about? Or do we want to cut into the Parks' time later on?
Can I ask a question?
Of course.
Is this our only opportunity to talk about the Parks Levy key performance indicators?
No, we could schedule some time subsequently, I guess, but if, so I mean, that would be an option. We could just skip over that, which would be, I feel bad about telling the Parks people to postpone, but what do people think?
I think we should keep a half hour for the indicators. I think that you're right, that the other one can be short. I think we bit off more than we can chew on this presentation. I think it could be Part 1 and Part 2 with the amount of projects on here. And I hope that next time we'll see more of the private partners that you're working with in the presentation, too.
That's what I think.
Councilor Ryan?
I was going to add, I think we should finish the presentation for all these projects in one go, because I think that maybe for a follow-up meeting, we could have some folks from the community, developers, different people involved in the project come and have that discussion with us openly, because I know I'm getting texts from different people now who saw this was on the agenda, who I didn't know had organized groups and thoughts and feelings about different projects, who may want to come next time, so that's my recommendation.
So are folks okay with that? We conclude the presentation, understanding we won't have really time for discussion?
I don't like it, but I'm getting used to it.
All right.
As long as there's time at some point in the future, our lack of questions does not imply we agree with everything. That's what I'm trying to get across here.
Okay. Proceed.
Okay. Apologies, councilors. We are trying to give justice to these projects, which have a lot of complexity to them, so thank you for that, and we're happy to follow up as needed. So this is the Zidell Yards site in South Waterfront. You can, I think, most know that there's discussions about a baseball stadium at this location. So this is the most recent visioning for this key area, is, which is a 13-lot subdivision approved by, for the 33-acre Zidell Yards property. The latest proposal is, for the site, is to house a Major Baseball League stadium, which, with opportunities for some adjacent mixed-use development. Given a number of code considerations, that is a relatively small site, it's a relatively small site for a stadium to be situated. The BPS staff has been focused on better understanding key code elements that may be involved in supporting the Portland Diamond Project's efforts to create a baseball stadium here at this location, and to also consider the floodplain and environmental considerations based on the final arena design and placement. So I'll go ahead and hand it over to Lauren.
The park infrastructure associated with the potential project includes the greenway bikeway and pedestrian pathway. The code requires this. The greenway is designed to be consistent with the trail that goes further to the north in South Waterfront, near OHSU. The proposed size of the ball field and the constrained site makes fitting the greenway in a little bit challenging, but some of the early renderings we've seen have been pretty exciting to date. They do extend out over the river, so that's, that's a challenge in itself, but I think a good challenge. We also have been looking at landscape and ecological enhancements. There's people that are interested in access to the water there. We're also looking at the design and function of a plaza space adjacent to the Tillicum Crossing, as well as mitigation requirements and permitting requirements. The design ideas to date have been very exciting, and so we're working forward with these, with the group on this.
Transportation infrastructure for this sort of radiates, and I guess in three categories, directly adjacent to where there might be the ballpark statement, stadium, where we still need to complete Southwest Bond Avenue to complete the Moody-Bond couplet that has long been planned for the district, that is anticipated to be 15 feet in the air in much of its alignment and move up and cross over the Tillicum Crossing. Also necessary is to complete the infrastructure that we, has been planned to support South, South Waterfront as a district, so the South Portal intersection at Bancroft still needs to be resolved to make sure that there's adequate vehicle access in and out of the district. And then we start to need to think about what are the sort of broader transportation connections that might make it possible to welcome all of these future sports fans to and from this district while the district is still continuing to function well. So parking management, where would, where would people transition from being perhaps drivers who are destined for the game to becoming pedestrians and transit riders or cyclists? How to make those connections function well? How to make those connections function well? And then broader, the transportation demand strategy for event goers to really make this an event venue that people are happy to be coming to and are, we're all very proud of.
And then last but not least, we know that a new $2 billion venue would be an important catalyst for additional visitorship and tourism to our central city, particularly right now. And that would include both games, but also events that could be hosted at the event or at the venue. And then also wanted to identify that PDP has also been working closely with AFL-CIO to have a partnership around future operations of any venue. And lastly, in fact, the stadium would take only a portion, so kind of the northern half of the 33 acres that Patricia mentioned, and the southern half, there remains opportunities for additional mixed-use development, both in terms of housing and commercial uses. And if we move to the next slide in terms of timeline, I think the important dates on this really are starting to share some of the dates that PDP has shared with us around the Major League Baseball timeline for making a decision about expansion plans around a team. And with that, I will hand it back to Patricia.
Okay. So the next project is the Tom McCall Waterfront Park. Of course, this is a city-owned park. It's approximately 30 acres, and it's the centerpiece of the Central City public gathering spaces. It has an opportunity to be a catalyst for the new downtown. The Governor Tom McCall Waterfront Park stretches from south of the Steel Bridge to the Bowl and then to a path along the River Place and the Marina. Near-term activation and long-term redesign of the Tom McCall Waterfront Park, starting with the Bowl, is viewed as an important tool for central city revitalization. Multiple bureaus are working on complementary efforts to support the park redesign and activation. The park has open space zoning, and the Central City 2035 Plan has an urban design concept for the central reach of the river that envisions, pardon me, major riverfront activity hubs that feature riverfront attractions with commercial uses at Tom McCall Park, South Waterfront, around the Omsi area and around the Rose Quarter and Convention Center area. It also envisions areas with public access to the river and swimming opportunities, as well as river transit. BPS is currently also working on a waterfront urban design study that builds on that existing design concept to identify opportunity sites, nodes, and important Key West streets where public realm improvements and new development can create more synergies with the river, particularly in the area between the park blocks and the river. Additionally, a targeted Central City Code Amendment project that's currently underway is also exploring ways to allow a greater mix of retail and commercial recreational uses in the park to support the future vision for the more vibrant and activated waterfront.
Lauren? We believe as a city that we're at a crucial point in our history, and that Waterfront Park is a new iconic city landmark, has the potential for a great catalytic effect to downtown in particular. The goal here is to create a vibrant, sustainable place that sustains the connection between the community, visitors, and the Willamette River. And we want to define Portland. PPNR recently applied and was granted a $750,000 grant from Metro, 2040 Planning Grant. And we're in that process now, trying to think about the whole park in broad strokes and the Bowl itself more particularly, which is what we think we have the funding for right now. So the point we're at right now, Tom McCall Waterfront Bowl Redevelopment Project proposes a national design competition, which we are out for right now, the design director on. It'll create the new vision for all of the park and the Bowl, and it'll be led by this creative director to be selected within the next several weeks, actually. The creative director is going to work with PPNR staff to lead a public process that produces design options reflecting the community's visions and values, and ultimately select a design, produce a design cost estimate and implementation and funding plan for an iconic public place. It's going, our goals for this are an iconic space, creating a unique Portland experience, supporting placemaking, economic growth and tourism, supporting programming in public spaces, including public river and swim recreation access, ecological sustainability, central access view, street connections, extensive ADA accessibility, north and south, improving the Greenway Trail, celebrating Portland's diverse cultural and indigenous heritage, and recognizing the system's historical ties to the river, as well as, of course, addressing maintenance responsibilities and replacing our aging infrastructure in that location. The Bowl itself is the area that will be the focus of the winning design team's detailed design. And then we hope to get another grant from Metro, which we're working on right now in their large-scale community visions, to actually construct the beginning elements of the park.
Councilor Ryan, let's ask for a special privilege, ask one question.
Sure, sure.
One question is, Lauren.
Yeah.
Are you working with all those partners who are down in Salem advocating for funds for infrastructure?
Yes, actually, we have many partners associated with the project.
I know that, but are you working with them?
Which group is that in particular?
All the people that were down in Salem that were advocating for these funds for the infrastructure of the waterfront. And we were getting a lot of green lights.
Human Access Project and Portland Waterfront Pavilion were our two partners that were listed on our grant application that actually reviewed--
The Blues Festival, Rose Festival, the people that were here yesterday--
Yep, exactly. All the elements, yes.
Okay, I'll follow up offline.
Sure.
I think there's some disagreements on that.
The park creates a spark that can be, to allow us to start a conversation around central downtown as a new neighborhood. It has the potential to be one of the most vibrant urban neighborhoods in Portland, if not in the U.S. PBOT is looking at the character of streets and public spaces adjacent to the park to think about how that can, together with the park, be the anchor for a new neighborhood. How we redefine, again, those spaces helps to spur adjacent private development, becomes the attractor for people to want to live, work, and recreate in this area. And so we've been working a lot, actually, all of the bureaus here have been working a lot with City of Possibility and Randy Gragg to do a series of design charrettes and activities. Actually, this Friday afternoon, there's a summary of a latest charrette from 3:00 to 5:00, I think it is, at the City of Possibility site. We'd love to see you there. 3:00 to 6:00, thank you. Where we'll be sharing out specific design activities, looking at Harvey Milk Street as a connected spine that could connect into this area. There's also the importance of looking at the character of Nato and of Harbor Drive, which are candidly still barrier infrastructure if we're really trying to connect downtown to the Waterfront Park. And we need to look at the character of that streets, those streets, to make sure that we are doing all we can to knit together the development areas with the Waterfront Park itself.
And I'll just close this out. I just want to acknowledge the Office of Film and Events, we have, kind of, our partnership also includes the Office of Film and Events at Prosper. We know the importance of providing venue space for operators and events to be hosted downtown. I think for those councilors who were at the tree lighting this past couple of weeks, you see the impact that 25,000 people coming into downtown can have, not only for gathering community, but also for small businesses. And then I would also just highlight, I think we are paying attention, this is something that Art just mentioned, in terms of the City of Possibilities exercise, as well as BPS, is really paying attention to what are the key locations in Waterfront Park that you can then tie back in to the downtown, particularly when we think about things like James Beard Public Market coming open in the next year. That's going to be super important to think about, how do we connect what's happening in the park back into our downtown and the key, like, what's happening for small businesses along those corridors? And with that, I will hand it back to Lauren, I think, for a more detailed timeline around the Metro grant efforts.
So we were awarded the grant this spring, and our design competition manager will be awarded in the next month. The project advisory committee is being selected now, and that will happen in the spring, begin in the spring. We are applying for, as I noted, the Large Scale Community Vision Grant for the maximum amount, $10 million for construction. So we could use your support on that. The actual design competition will begin in the summer of next year, and then the film, the, sorry, the design firm finalist will be selected in fall to winter of 2026. And we're anticipating the 30% design and cost estimate by fall of 2027.
Thank you. So now we want to talk about, just, we just have a few projects left, but we wanted to make sure, as much as Central City is very important, we wanted to also make sure that we were spotlighting some projects that are happening in other locations of, outside of the Central City, that from the inner northwest to the east, to east Portland. So one project is the Montgomery Park Area Plan. In 2024, the city adopted a land use and transportation plan for a 64-acre area in the northwest Portland that is adjacent to Montgomery Park and centered around the former ESCO Foundry Site, which is a 15-acre opportunity site. The Montgomery Park Area Plan and resulting York District Plan, which is essentially the zoning code for the area, allows a wide mix of uses in the area, which is currently comprised of the largely vacant ESCO site and land that is predominantly developed with light industrial uses. It establishes a mixed-use residential and employment area that is anticipated to be developed with 2,000 to 3,000 new units, including 200 to 300 affordable units, and to create capacity for 4,000 new jobs, including 800 new middle-wage jobs. A public benefit agreement that was adopted by council in conjunction with the land use and transportation plan includes commitments for the development of early affordable housing at 60% area median income, 800 new middle-wage jobs, new local streets, and right-of-way dedications to accommodate the planned streetcar extension. As well as in later phases of development, the construction of a new 40,000-square-foot public park and public art that commemorates York, an enslaved Black member of the Corps of Discovery, after whom a street in the area is named. The project also, of course, includes a 1.3 mile round-trip streetcar extension, an extension of the north-south streetcar line, which will connect the area to transit and support the evolving uses in the area. I'm going to just go ahead and quickly wrap this one up to give a quick overview of the timeline. The city, BPS and PBOT in particular, were awarded a federal transit-oriented district planning grant, which allowed this planning process, which helped fund this planning process. And that work occurred between 2019 and through 2021, and then, of course, beyond as well. But in, through, from 2022 to 2024, the plan was developed, the route was selected, and the public benefit agreement provisions were, you know, negotiated with the property owner. 2025, Metro Council adopted the local preferred alternative for the streetcar extension and made corresponding amendments to the regional plan, which were needed to bring the newly adopted city plan and the regional plan into consistency with each other. The public benefit agreement, of course, creates the incentive to build affordable housing first. And we learned recently that Mercy Housing Northwest is under contract to acquire land from the property owner of the former ESCO site to develop affordable housing, design and funding for the affordable housing project. And project development and design of the streetcar project are anticipated over the next couple of years, with construction of the streetcar project anticipated in 2028 through 2030. And I think that generally rounds that out, unless you wanted to add something, Art. Thank you. All right. So the next project is 82nd Avenue. Here are some images and renderings related to both the transportation and development vision underway at 82nd Avenue. In 2022, ODOT transferred jurisdiction of 82nd Avenue to the city. Since then, the city has been planning and implementing both short and long-term improvements to the street. In partnership with Metro, TriMet, and Community, the region has identified a locally preferred alternative for high-frequency bus rapid transit service on the corridor. As it relates to land use, the city's comprehensive plan 2035 updated zoning and land use in the area in support of the transit project. Also in support of the transit project, BPS will soon be embarking on a project to coordinate, to conduct a corridor-wide housing opportunity analysis to identify sites available for near-term development, including, for housing, including development feasibility and understanding gaps between development costs and achievable rents. This is an action that's identified in the Housing Production Strategy. Incidentally, it's Action C6, and it will be coordinated with the TIFF district action planning for the area. Further, the city, I think some of you know that the city was recently awarded a $350,000 Metro 2040 grant to develop a conceptual master plan for a significant opportunity site on the corridor, the 40-acre Eastport Plaza site, to consider how phased infill development on the site can contribute to community goals for housing, economic development, anti-displacement, and climate resiliency, and greening of the corridor. The master planning process for that site is going to be done in partnership with property owners of the site and the 82nd Avenue Coalition, which includes nonprofit organizations Apano, Oregon Walks, Unite Oregon, and Verde, and will be done in coordination with the broader housing analysis that I mentioned previously. And so I'll go ahead and kick it over to Art to provide a little more.
I think you covered it great, and for the sake of time, I think I'll keep us moving.
Okay.
I think, and then you have thorough dates here. The only other thing, I would just appreciate council's approval of the community leadership committees for the new TIFF districts out of 82nd Avenue. They all had a kickoff earlier this week. I think they're really enthusiastic to get their work going, and we will be back before you in the next, you know, 12 to 18 months with an action plan from those TIFF districts that could identify resources to start to implement on some of the adjacent development to 82nd Avenue transportation improvements.
Yeah, and in the interest of time, I think we'll just, this is a timeline that you can review more closely, but it outlines the steps that have been taken to plan the transit project since the ownership of 82nd Avenue took place. So I think this is our last topic, our project, importance of Gateway as a regional town center. And both, you know, the opportunities and challenges facing the town center are something that we are thinking about all the time. The Gateway Transit Center is located near the Gateway Shopping Center and other opportunity sites. Gateway is a designated regional center in the city's comprehensive plan and has been zoned through previous land use planning efforts to allow for a wide mix of uses and significant residential density with proximity to two major transit lines that are in the area. The 2021 Design Overlay Zone amendments introduced objective design standards as an alternative to discretionary design review to streamline development in the Gateway area, as well as many other areas of the city. And the city has used TIFF funding for early investments in transit and transit-oriented development, and more recently at the Gateway Discovery Park and Nick Fish. And with that, I'll turn it over to partners to provide any other--
Sure, I think the one thing I will just highlight here is acknowledging that there has been a town hall or halls with kind of D1 councilors, as well as follow-up conversation, and acknowledging that at Gateway, at the Gateway Transit Center, really the Gateway Shopping Center, and the announcement of a closure by Fred Meyer has really caused a crisis that requires us to kind of double down and refocus on what we are doing at the Gateway Transit Center, the conversations that we've had, both with council offices, as well as the mayor's office, is partnering with PAC Trust that does own that property, the Gateway Shopping Center property, to identify near-term activation opportunities, as well as longer-term redevelopment plans. I think when we think about this area, we think about three additional properties that we just wanted you aware of. One is at, right at the Gateway Transit Center, there is the Oregon Clinic that provides important health services to residents and visitors out there, want to make sure that they continue to stay, and that particularly a surface parking lot that we own continues to serve their clients' needs. The second is actually a property that is owned by David Douglas School District, that is just to the, to the north, to the south, to the south of the Oregon Clinic property that's, it's just under five acres. It's actually a property they bought, kind of land-banked for future expansion for an elementary school, so we've been partnering with them. And then we own an additional about five acres just to the east of the David Douglas School District. We're in partnership with Project, who is looking at redeveloping middle-income housing at that location, as well as with PBOT, to actually start to introduce some of the street grids and connectivity that was committed to east Portland to improve both pedestrian, as well as car and bike traffic in the area. So you'll see actually a new street get under construction here in the next couple of years. And that probably closes us out in terms of the timeline, is just knowing that right now, our focus really is on kind of partnering with both City Hall and the mayor's office and D1 councilors to make sure that we're focused on activations, particularly as the Fred Meyer vacancy kind of has impact for community.
Councilor Avalos has a question, but I also need to let my colleagues know that Claire reminded me that this actually is our only opportunity as a committee to weigh in on the Parks' key performance indicators, because Parks is committed-- in on the parks key performance indicators, because Parks is committed to sending the KPIs in writing to full council before the end of the year. So I do want to, I think that we actually should probably spend more time on the parks KPIs than is currently scheduled, so we need to wrap this up. Unfortunately, we could talk about these projects for, you know, days on end, and we probably should. And then we'll probably ask the for a truncation of the discussion of the annexation. But Councilor Avalos, proceed.
Thank you. It's more a comment. Appreciate your presentation. This might feel nitpicky to you, but and subtle, but is important to me. I just want to note that this presentation was structured as citywide projects and everywhere else. I'm sorry, central city projects and everywhere else. Again, it's subtle, but it makes a difference to east Portland, right? I don't want us to, whenever we're talking about redevelopment, economic boom, we always talk about downtown. We talk about these inner east side areas, and everything else is just seen as, and the rest of the city. And when you look at the center of where all of that is, and you look at the circles around it, east Portland is the furthest, right? And and it just shows the amount of effort and intention that goes into what it looks like to put redevelopment efforts into my district. So again, it might feel subtle to you, but to me, it stuck out because I think I'm trying to help us shift these discussions about our projects to be more inclusive, especially of areas that desperately need them. I mean, we ended on Gateway. I think that's needs to be way higher on our list as far as what does it look like to stimulate the economy and include the entire city in that. So I just wanted to note it so that, you know, we can think about how we are framing these discussions in the future, so that we're not so stuck on what it looks like for the central side, that we miss the other parts of the city that desperately need this work. Thank you.
Thank you.
That does conclude our presentation. Sorry that it took so long, but we appreciate your time and happy to answer any questions if you have them now or at some future time.
Thank you so much. Just, Councilor Ryan has a statement that I think he wanted to make.
Yeah, sure. I just want to say, first of all, it's good to get the update. I have the privilege of listening to this for the last five years, and I realize there's a lot of obstacles on why this isn't moving as much as as fast as I think everyone would like. I'm going to ask for a request, because in one year's time, I can't really see a lot of big changes, and I know there's reasons for that, but I don't know what they are. So I think what would be helpful, if there could be a commitment to having quarterly updates, that could be even in an email to people on this committee and also people on the, maybe the whole council, but definitely arts and economy as well. And it'd be important for us to understand what are the current obstacles that are in the way of keeping to a timeline, because I, we all realize this timeline, or let me just say, the timeline keeps expanding. That's the main thing. And I also be working with the co-chairs to figure out how we can work together, what's arts and economy, maybe we have a combined session, I don't know, but I want to like look at how we can take them apart. We could have spent all this time just on OMSI, and I don't think anyone up there would disagree with that. So that's really my request right now is more how we can be engaged as a council. Our city's in a red alert time right now when it comes to revenue coming into the city from projects that used to generate it, and this gives us hope, but they're stalling. And it's, it's, there's a lot of reasons for that, and I think we just need to understand them so we could be more helpful in our role. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. I'm sure all of us have specific questions we've written down that we'll forward you in writing after this morning, but thank you very much.
Thank you so much. Appreciate it.
Diego, could you please read the next item?
Item three, annex the 5048 Southwest Hilltop Lane property.
Counselor, I have two items. Request for information, when is the next meeting of this committee?
The next meeting is Thursday, January 15th.
Can I move to postpone this item until January 15th? If this is the only opportunity to talk about the parks levy, this is not an emergency ordinance. It relates to one property somewhere in southwest.
Mr. Hank, two, two questions. Is there an urgency of concluding this?
That's fine.
What do people think? Also, if we really, has anybody signed up to testify?
No one has signed up.
If we, I hate to like have staff come here and like, you know, not be able to act at all. If we dispense with what we talked about, having sort of an introduction to annexation in general, and you're just presenting this property, how quickly do you think we can get through this?
Five minutes.
We could jump to the, yeah, we could do this in 15 minutes. I would also ask if we do move this to another committee, could we get a time certain on on that time, so we don't have to re-notice for the whole thing, then that will add?
I'd like to amend my motion to postpone until 9:35 a.m. on January 15.
I would rather move, move through if we could do it quickly, but Counselor Canal has made a motion. Is there a second?
Yeah.
I just think we would have to take a look at what's already on the agenda and make sure that we're not making a commitment that we can't uphold right now, so.
Okay, let's go. Let's go.
All right. In the interest of time, we're going to move to just talking about the property very quickly and dispense with the introduction about the background on annexations. And I'll just add, while we're bringing the slides up, that historically, annexations of single properties like this often have been handled on the consent agenda, so they're typically fairly low-profile decisions.
Good morning, Council. Kyle Jenkins with the Bureau of Planning Sustainability for the record. As Ryan and Eric just noted, we had a short overview, and we go into presentation mode here, sorry, on kind of the annexation process and and kind of the background. This is one of the, one of the first annexations we've had in a while, but I'm going to, you know, just jump right into the details so we can get moving. So this is an annexation located at 5048 Southwest Hilltop Lane, which is in west Portland, off of southwest Humphrey Boulevard. This property is within the Southwest Hills Neighborhood Association in uncorporated Multnomah County. Important to note, for the purposes of annexation, this property is located within the city of Portland Urban Service boundary, which makes it eligible for annexation into the city of Portland. Property details, it's just a single-family residential property, about an acre and a half. The impetus for this annexation request is the property owner building a new single-family or a new single-unit residential on the property, and they wish to connect to city sewer. In order to do so, our public facilities and urban service policies require annexation. Important to note, this property is contiguous to the city of Portland's municipal boundaries, which you can see on that kind of, the dotted line to the north of the red outlined property, which is that subject property. Just a few images of the lot. This is looking south onto the subject property from Hilltop Lane. This is looking north across Hilltop Lane at the property that is currently already within the city of Portland limits, and this is Hilltop Lane itself. There are five criteria for approval for for annexations, and I'm going to run through pretty quickly here. A states that any applicable urban service agreements adopted with pursuant to the statute must be, or that the petition must be in compliance with these two statutes. Thirdly, any applicable cooperative planning agreement adopted pursuant to that ORS has to be met. The application must comply with any urban service or public facility plans pursuant to statewide planning goal. And then the the application must comply with the comprehensive plan, which in this case are the city of Portland's and Multnomah County. Going through the criteria in a little more detail, that first criteria, which refers to urban service agreements, in this case, the city of Portland and Multnomah County have intergovernmental agreement that agrees that the city will provide urban services to areas that are currently within Multnomah County upon annexation. So the urban service boundary really implements that that agreement. Criterion B is not applicable. There is no specific annexation plan in place for this area or other areas in the city. Criterion C refers to cooperative planning agreements. The city currently has a land use planning agreement that assigns Portland land use designation, Portland land use designations and zoning to properties within uncorporated Multnomah County, including this property. So it's important to note here that that the annexation will not change any development allowances or zoning or any development rights in this area. And then lastly, again, as I mentioned, with the urban service boundary, because this property is located within the Portland Urban Service boundary, annexation is anticipated, which means that at some point, this property was planned to be included in the city of Portland's municipal limits. Criterion D speaks to public facility plans. Portland's public facility policy is directed by the comprehensive plan, specifically Chapter Eight. Again, I mentioned earlier that the, when properties wish to require or wish to connect to city sewer, the city requires annexation as a condition of connection to those services. So again, this is just following through with that policy and implementing that policy. And then lastly, the city comprehensive plan currently has a R10, which is kind of a low, a low-density residential designation on that property. Annexation, as I mentioned, again, does not result in any additional development rights assigned to the site or impact any plans that are currently ongoing with the with the property owners. And then any future, any development will be subject to our our normal development process, including review by PP&amp;D and BES. As far as public outreach grows, this was, this is a single-property annexation that was requested by the property owner based on staff informing them that in order to connect to sewer, they had to annex. Notice was given to the neighboring properties per our process. We also reached out directly to the Southwest Hills Neighborhood Association and had some some back and forth to ensure that there was clarity about what annexation meant and kind of the process and potential impacts on on neighbors. There were no complaints or other questions that were received as of this week. So based on on the petition, we recommend that the council committee refer ordinance to full council with that recommendation of adoption. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Canal has a question or comment?
It's a comment, so if you want to keep it till after questions, I understand.
I don't see any questions, so I think you can comment.
I move to refer this item to the full council with no recommendation. It means I think we should not prioritize a single property that sold to for over $2 million 12 years ago over the needs of 630,000 Portlanders who are paying the parks levy. And I want to get this off of our agenda so we can talk about that as rapidly as possible.
I, is there a second?
I don't understand how that's different from just voting on it right now.
Oh, no recommendation means we'll actually discuss it there, because we don't have time for it here, and we have much more time at the full council. That's the only difference.
Diego, is there anyone signed up to testify?
No one has signed up.
Is there any discussion?
Can I just ask the staff what the impacts of Counselor Canal's suggestion would be if we have the discussion at full council?
I think you you could explain that in your, in your committee report, and it probably doesn't have a significant impact.
Okay, then I will second the proposal so that we can have a broader discussion.
Counselor Canal has made a motion. Counselor Murillo has seconded it. Is there any discussion of the motion? I personally think that when something comes to us recommended by staff, and there's no objection by the immediate folks, I have no problem sending the recommendation to council, sending this to council with a recommendation, but it's obviously not something anybody should do or die over. So if there's no further discussion of the motion, can we call the roll?
Can I just ask a quick question?
Yes.
Staff, was there any pushback from any of the parties involved with this?
There was not, no.
No.
I repeat, there's been none?
No.
Okay, that's really helpful to hear. Thanks.
All right. Clerk, can we call the roll on Counselor Canal's motion?
This is on the motion to not refer the ordinance to the full council.
No, no.
To refer without recommendation as to passage.
Sorry about that. To refer without recommendation as to passage? Is that correct?
Yes, yes.
Thank you. Apologies. Avalos?
Aye.
Canal?
Aye.
Brian?
No.
Murillo?
Aye.
Novick?
No.
The motion passes with four aye votes and one nay vote.
Point of order. I believe that was three, two.
Three, three aye votes and two nay votes.
Apologies. Thank you.
Okay, so.
Thank you.
The motion carries, and the ordinance document number 202543, moved to federal council with no recommendation. Is that it? Ask the clerk, is there anything else we need to do other than, let's see, because this is a land use item, I need to state for the record that the 5048 Southwest Hilltop Lane annexation will be continued to a full council meeting at January 14th at 9:45 a.m. Is that it? Are we done?
Correct.
All right. Thank you very much. Diego, could you please read the next item?
Item four, parks levy key performance indicators.
Our Public Works, DCA, and Parks leadership are here to share proposed key performance indicators of the parks levy. The council received a memo last Friday with draft KPI information, so hopefully committee members have had a chance to review this. After the presentation, we'll have a chance as a committee to provide feedback as to draft KPIs. I'll clarify, this is not a committee action item. My understanding is the final list of proposed KPIs will be shared with the full council in writing before the end of the calendar year. And also, I should note that if any of us in the committee come up with further feedback after this morning, I'm sure that Parks would be willing to listen to it. So I hand it off to DCA Donapal, Director Schmansky, and Jessica Green of the Parks Foundation.
Okay, good morning. Sonia Schmansky, interim director of Portland Parks and Recreation. I'm here with Jessica Green, executive director of the Portland Parks Foundation, and Sarah Huggins from the Parks Bureau, who you know very well. DCA Donapal is not able to join us this morning. Before I introduce this content, I will emphasize what Counselor Novick said, which is, we're very happy to keep meeting with you this week, next week, next month, next year. This is an exercise that we're doing now as a point in time to get launched with the next levy, and we're going to keep learning and growing, so this is the beginning. And I don't, I don't want this to feel too pressurized, so thank you for that. As you mentioned, last month, Portland voters approved a five-year levy to support Parks and Recreation's operations, plus a small amount for capital repair citywide through fiscal year 2031. The KPI dashboard we're developing will help us show activity and impact against those levy commitments, and we are very grateful to you for the direction that you see on the screen, which launched us in this, and to our partnership with Parks Foundation. Jessica has been a really wonderful collaborator as we've developed these and convened stakeholders to review them and improve them together. This is the specific guidance we received, and there was discussion in council about the appropriate number. You sort of landed on plus or minus 10. We have about a dozen for you today. The the gravity of the conversation is that it wants to grow, so we're happy to take your feedback about where we can consolidate or shrink. Are you doing the slides? Great job. Thank you. This is a high-level review of where we've been and what's next. Of course, in October, we began developing draft metrics for consideration, a combination of things we're measuring now and things that we'd like to be able to measure that would take some work, but we have time to do that work. We met with councilors Ryan and Novick a couple of times for a right-track, wrong-track kind of check. And then very recently, we had two conversations with groups of stakeholders. Those were excellent. They were energetic and creative and rich and so helpful to us. And I'll say the dialogue, it really was dialogue, and it was as useful, I think, to talk through performance measurement generally, what we can and can't do, how we use the information, as to hear the specific ideas and share our ideas. Today, in bold, we're here with you, and as Co-Chair mentioned, we will be submitting a proposed final list of these measures to you by end of this month, and then we'll begin getting ready to collect and report on this starting in July. Collect in July, report later. And again, asterisk on that, that's not the end. December 31 is not the end, and there is time to continue discussing before we truly finalize that list. And then, as we've talked about with our stakeholders and with you, as we and as the city continue maturing, kind of clarifying our vision and practices around. city continue maturing, kind of clarifying our vision and practices around performance management, I expect we will have better tools and different ways of using information, and that might find its way back into this list. So I'm thinking there's a good chance we're going to be revisiting and evolving and improving as we go. There's probably an argument that if we do that, anything that we modify, we keep collecting as it was anyway, so we've got five years of data, but we can have that conversation when appropriate. Jessica is going to talk to you about what we heard from stakeholders, then I will share a little bit what we heard from stakeholders that is not specific to the dashboard, per se. And then, actually, Sarah, I might ask you to walk through the measures, and we'll hear from you.
Yes, thank you for having me here today. Jessica Green with the Portland Parks Foundation. I want to thank you, councilors, for your leadership on the KPIs. They really are going to provide a solid foundation for tracking levy priorities, both accountability by the city leadership and by community advocates. We're already seeing that in these collaborative conversations with stakeholders. And then I do want to take a moment to thank Parks for having an open process for feedback and what I will share today. They really incorporated a lot of the stakeholder feedback that we provided over the last week and a half, which is great to see. And so, as you are aware, PPF was intimately involved in getting the levy to referral in July, and then I stepped in as chair of the PAC for the campaign. So as a result, PPF stepped in to convene the stakeholder conversation in partnership with PP&amp;R on these KPIs. In this situation, I do want to be clear how we're defining stakeholders, because this is a citywide levy, and any individual in the city essentially is a stakeholder. And so in this scenario, how I defined the stakeholders that I asked to convene around this was to really think about including those who supported the levy development, also were active parts of the levy campaign, those who really opposed it or remain neutral but have been a part of this conversation over the last year, and who, in one way or another, were intimately involved in the dynamics of the levy itself. And so that's where we started, and that includes representatives from the PAC, from Labor, the Metro Chamber, local, national park partners. We also spoke to community advocates from the Concerned Citizens, Portland Parks Alliance, and the Levy Oversight Committee. We got a lot of diverse perspectives in response, and I will note the timeline for the stakeholder feedback was compressed, but I will say the stakeholders stepped up and were able to act in a quick fashion to provide a lot of good input. So I know we haven't walked through all them today, but I do want to provide some information on what we all discussed with PP&amp;R over the last week. So overall, I just want to start out with kind of high-level overall. We all agree that the dashboard has the appropriate level of information when combined with the other levels, more detailed levels of reporting on the levy. Through conversations, we understood that this is high-level, and we also offered a lot of additional metrics that will be tracked within the more detailed reporting. Visually, this chart that you see in front of you, which is a combination of charts and graphs, are helpful in communicating the performance. There was a shift to request, there was an option for callouts, there's a shift to request that the callouts connect to broader outcome goals and provide additional information. Specifically stakeholders, we wanted the boxes to directly show how the metrics link to specific levy outcomes, so that really was an outcome-focused KPI presentation. There was a request to add a QR code or a link to resource for additional information, reports, and maps, but to keep this super-high level. And then also to make it really clear which performance measures are new and which have historical data that we can pull from. And then there was a general question around what council's form of oversight will look like for these. For example, will the KPIs be assigned to a particular committee for oversight? There was an assumption that the bureau director and the Parks Levy Oversight Committee will have oversight roles, but there was a lot of interest in clearly defining how city council, what their role in the oversight was. Another kind of going into that high-level piece, you'll see at the top, a percentage of operations funded by the Parks Levy. Stakeholders really wanted to be able to see this year-over-year, not just a snapshot in time, so you'll see that update here, specifically to show the levy is backfilling general fund reductions, and it feels like this would be much more transparent to show changes year-over-year in reliance of the levy funds for operations, so that we don't end up in year four. We can see if in year four, there's a much higher increase in percentage than in year one.
I'm wondering if you might hit highlights?
Yeah.
Rather than every?
Too many more. Okay, highlights. That was a highlight. I will say that as a highlight.
I knew it was.
That was a big one. The other big one that I would say is, we want to see as much as possible a clear demarcation of what the levy is funding, in essence, to unbury the levy from the general fund as much as possible in these metrics, so that it gives an opportunity to better communicate to the public the benefit of the levy, and then again, to prevent this backfilling of general fund. Let's see. So high-level on partnerships, I would just say that we would love to see a metric on there, and it's not necessarily possible, so we're talking about it, but a metric in there around, how do you report the overall investment in the park system, not just the dollars through the Parks Bureau? The volunteer numbers are reported system-wide by all the partners out there that are doing work in partnership with parks, not just directly with parks, and it would be wonderful to be able to highlight the breadth of partnerships and the investment that partners are also bringing into the system, so that we start to see that as a whole. I also think that's a metric to show strengthening partnerships, because if you're reducing barriers for additional work by your partners, you're going to see growth in investment in the system. So that was high-level. You'll also notice sort of a placeholder on the wildfire metric, because there was a lot of feedback back and forth on, how do we measure tracking outside of just the amount of money that we're spending on it, but actually thinking about the things that we're doing? And this goes back to directly linking things to an outcome. On the preserving program, oh, I would also say on here that isn't tracked, directly relates to the health of our natural areas, and so we would like to see in future iterations, if possible, something that speaks to natural area health, thinking about the health of our systems there. And I'll let you guys fill in more on that. On the preserve program access, we really wanted to see changing the metric that was just highlighting the percentage of wait-listed programs, but to show a measure of program, to show fill rate, percentage of fill rate in classes, to show a measure of program access and use, rather than just which ones were at overcapacity, but which ones were actually being used, or how many were actually being used. And we wanted to change financial assistance to the access discount in the measure language, just to continue to build familiarity with the program itself. And then lastly, on ensuring neighborhood parks maintenance and cleanliness, we noticed that there was not anything that specifically spoke to safety, and a lot of the conversations with voters, residents out there, is the importance of feeling safe in their public spaces. And so we really wanted to see a metric that speaks to that directly. There's a suggested one in there around a park ranger measure, tracking the percentage of calls addressed. There have been other ideas put out, but that's the one that landed there. But I think overall, the one thing we really found is something that directly links to this safety outcome is really important. And then there's a whole host of other things that I will let Sarah cover, but I will just say that overall, stakeholders were very appreciative of this collaborative process, want to stay engaged, and like Sonia and you all were saying, this process hopefully will continue to evolve over time, and we're all hoping to stay part of that.
Thank you. I'll highlight two things in addition to that, and then we'll look at the measures together. The first is to put a point of emphasis on something Jessica described. So much of the feedback was about showing not just activity, but showing activity and impact, or a level of activity against a target or a goal. So where we might have had hours worked, folks really were challenging us to turn that into, you know, percent of something addressed, so that we could really understand where, how we were doing on a kind of supply-demand dimension, and start to see gaps. And I think that's super-helpful, and we want to grow in that direction, too, so that we can give you information that helps you see where the system is really responsive and where it might not be. So that was my favorite thing about all that feedback. And then number two, the top bullet here, we were in finance committee Monday to provide information about a resolution, ordinance, an item that's coming to you very shortly, proposing that the Parks Bureau be a pilot with CBO in the budget process to differently show information in the budget documents, so that you can clearly see which funds are supporting which activities, and show that as a proportion of staffing. So we'll be working toward that, and that gets at a lot of the feedback. You know, we really want to know what the levy did versus what the general fund did versus maybe what revenue did, and we want to see that both at a budget level and at staffing. So we're going to go now to metrics. Like I said, there are about a dozen, so I will suggest, don't explain all of them. They're evident when you look at them, but maybe call out the commitments, which are in bold. We've got three slides here that are the top, middle, and bottom of this dashboard, and we would love your feedback, and then we'd love to keep having it. Go ahead. Wonderful. Thank you, Director Schmansky. So in this one, we're focusing in on kind of the overall percentage of operations, which Jessica described, wanting to also see kind of a trend line and year-over-year change for that. Partnerships and protecting nature in a changing climate. We have addressed kind of the items that Jessica brought up, so kind of adding number of partners, adding the number of operations funded by grants and donations, in addition to kind of some of those metrics that we have been tracking more over time, and will lend themselves to a historic look-back, like total volunteer hours or amount of grants and donations received. We changed out on the tree metric to add the number of park trees that are receiving proactive maintenance and the trees planted in priority neighborhoods, or priority areas, I should say. That's one where yesterday, we received some feedback from Councilor Coria Mulain, that the trees planted in priority areas would be helpful to see further disaggregated by district, which we could do for you by year. And then also, again, bringing in those kind of system-wide outcome-level goals, like the percentage of tree canopy that we have as a city and what the goal is for that. We would also then be sharing the percentage survival rate for trees planted by urban forestry as kind of an informational number. In the next category, we're looking at ensuring neighborhood park maintenance and cleanliness. We brought in some additional call-out information that links back to surveys that we've done of Portland population, so bringing in kind of how people feel about the level of cleanliness in their parks and how people feel relative to feeling safe in their parks as additional context information. And again, as Jessica mentioned, added a metric tracking the percentage of park ranger calls that are addressed to help speak to kind of that safety component. In this one, an initial version had both kind of a longer list of the capital projects for that three cents for capital maintenance and a map. In this, we're recommending potentially more of a just map format, but with information on the map telling you what those projects are and what their status was. One of our stakeholders had a great piece of feedback, I thought about using color to help illustrate status there. That was me. And then finally, last but not least, preserving program access. We've gotten a lot of feedback from stakeholders around liking kind of being able to see the unique users and liking to see that disaggregated in a few ways. Here, we're showing age to really be able to focus in on kind of youth and seniors, which have emerged as centered populations, and also to further break that out by district. As Jessica mentioned, the average program fill rate is a measure that will help you see kind of how efficient we're being with the amount of space and staff hours. So the more full a class is, the more we're maximizing its potential to deliver services. So stakeholders did feel like that was a helpful information point to add. And we shifted, previously, we had been suggesting the number of participants using access discount, we're shifting it here to the percentage of participants using access discount based on feedback. Overall, I will also say that part of the stakeholder feedback was that a number of these metrics would benefit from sort of further disaggregation and ability to interact with the data. And so while what you're seeing here is kind of a static print format, we're looking to also create kind of an interactive online dashboard that people could further break things down by district or by demographic categories on their own, in addition to what you see us representing here. So for example, users' information could also be broken down by race, ethnicity, or by income levels, et cetera. I will stop here with my overview of the KPIs and happy to hear feedback and entertain questions.
Councilor Avalos?
Thank you. Well, first off, so is it, I guess, what are the goals of this meeting? Like, are we supposed to be filling in all these Xs? Or like, help me understand what we want to accomplish here.
I think that all we're doing is just providing feedback on these, and park spokes will take our feedback into account as they develop the version of this that is to be sent to council by the end of the year, with the understanding, as Sonia said, that it will probably, it might morph over the next year. But it's sort of a chance for us to say, make our suggestions, which could be incorporated into what gets sent to full council.
And so should our feedback be, like, I think that this X should be this number? Or how do you want to receive our feedback?
Yes, so the Xs are just to illustrate, we don't have these numbers yet, so these will be reporting actuals when each year of the levy occurs. They're just to illustrate, like, this is where a number will go once we have that number.
Okay, thank you. That makes sense.
Really, it's, do you like these measures?
Okay. So you don't want, like, us to project targets for each year?
Not yet.
Okay. Okay, well then, why don't we start with, I guess, how did you decide which of these KPIs to include, and are there important metrics you considered but chose not to track?
Sure. We started with a list of the language and the levy commitments from the ballot itself, so looked at what did you all send to voters and commit to. And so we started there, took kind of a crosswalk of that between a lot of metrics that the bureau has been tracking already, and in some cases, we looked at where there was very specific language in the levy that was referred to ballots, but that didn't match up as directly as we'd like to see with an existing metric, and suggested some areas of new metrics for development. That longer list of metrics, we appreciate feedback from both councilors Ryan and Novick on kind of helping us hone in on which of those resonated the most with them to move forward in the draft that we shared then with full council, I think in an email via DCA Donapal and with the stakeholders for additional feedback.
Okay. And then, given that District One faces, as you know, great need and longstanding service gaps, how did those district-level disparities inform the KPIs that you chose?
Yeah, I think a number of these metrics can be disaggregated by district, and I think being able to look at and share that information at a district level will help you to have conversations around what's the right balance there and where you may be seeing results that aren't in line with what your intention would be. I think earlier this fall, we shared, at Councilor Dunphy's request, Dunphy had requested via a budget note, a number of performance metrics disaggregated by district that were shared with all of you, and so I think we're happy to continue those conversations as well.
Honestly, you know, a lot of these are just data that we're going to receive, but you have one here that says, "Percentage of Portlanders feel safe and welcome in their parks." How do you expect to measure that?
Yeah, so that periodically, roughly every five years, we do a community needs survey. We partner with Portland State University in order to do that survey. We actually have data there, so we received the last update of that survey in 2024, and we would likely be doing it again in 2029.
Okay, thank you.
Councilor Maria?
Thank you, Chair Novick. I just wanted to say, I think you guys...
I just wanted to say, I think you guys did such a phenomenal job getting so much information on one piece of paper, and I think this looks really great. It's very comprehensive. We spoke yesterday, and I think adding the amount of calls that the Parks Rangers respond to is something that I know I've heard my constituents are very interested in, so I appreciate that being something that will be added in. And I'm especially excited about the website, that's going to be interactive. I think that, councilors, we should all add that to our newsletters, our link trees, whatever we have. I think that's the kind of thing the community will be really interested in, so a lot of the questions I had about things that I would want added, it sounds like are going to be on that website, and I'm just excited for the city to take more of a 21st century approach to getting all that information out there. So appreciate all of your work. No additional feedback, just wanted to say thank you.
Councilor Ryan?
Yes, thank you, Chair. It's good to see you, Sarah, Jessica, and Director Schmansky. Also, thank you for the feedback, or taking the feedback. I think what we see here is more balance. I made it clear that we just passed a, basically, a levy that was focused on recreation, so it was a recreation tax, and it was at a 75% increase from the last one. And so we have a lot of responsibility to really look at that part of the enterprise of parks. And so I see more balance than I did, and I really appreciate that. The Xs also caught my eye. I think by now, I thought I'd see something different, and so the conversation that Councilor Avalos brought up about targets, these aren't targets, these are actuals, I think you need both. My experience with doing continuous improvement work and doing data-driven work is it's okay to not meet the target, but you need to understand why. And if you don't have targets, then how do you, it's like a part of the play. And so I'm interested in why there was not targets and actuals that would be both included. So of course, we'd have actuals. That's kind of like what the new city administrator said yesterday, that's counting widgets, but what's impact? And impact gets more when you look at that disparity of what your target is and not meeting it, and then you look at the why, not to shame, but to improve.
Yeah, I would say two things on that, and thank you for your feedback here and previously. Strongly agree, and like I said, a lot of the feedback was, don't give us a number in isolation that we can't understand in terms of its performance against a goal. The Rangers example is very good, where previously we had, like, number of calls responded to, that doesn't tell you much, but as a percentage, it tells you a little bit more still within one number. So that was a great improvement. In terms of overall targets, my understanding is the, there are places where the Bureau has long-established, council-approved target levels of service, that's largely around access, and it's largely spatial. I don't know that we are as developed in terms of things like park ranger safety patrols, percent of calls addressed, percent restrooms, and in some cases, it's intuitive it should be 100%, but, you know, park restrooms, receiving daily restroom cleaning. There are places where we need to establish targets, is what I'm saying. We have an opportunity to do that, that's already kind of on the work plan, which is the level of service work that was recommended in the recent audit, that we're getting ready to launch soon with you. And I know that there are initiatives underway in the Bureau to better define targets in these places, and that could be an opportunity to come validate what we think is the target with you, to make sure you agree it's a target. I'm thinking of work Tanya's doing in land stewardship.
Maybe that's a question.
So that's the end of that answer, yeah.
Do you have the data sets with the baselines right now?
So the baseline, as I understand it, based on what you referred, would be 25, 26 levels of service.
I think the baseline now would be 23, 24, probably where we have data.
Yes.
Unless you have six-month data for this fiscal year.
Yes, so for historic measures, we can look back further. In the resolution to refer the levy, you had a finding that you were referring a level to sustain fiscal year 25, 26 levels of service. So we can go back even further, but I would anticipate treating that then as a baseline, given that language in the resolution, to show how we are sustaining or changing from that.
I would say you should have a baseline period of what you actually know, and then from that, you can start to set targets. That's my opinion. So I think that when you look at the partnership numbers, and then you go down here and look at the average program fill rate, you can start to see the percentage of earned revenue coming in. Parks has suffered by not having enough earned revenue, which is why we keep sticking it to the property taxpayers who are now overburdened and are dealing with affordability. And so I just hope that we address those concerns, because we saw such a big increase in the no vote the last 20 years, and we want to start to build more trust so that starts to go back down, and we have bigger yes votes. I think that sub-indicators are really a big deal when you have these type of goals. And so my question would be, it can be like watching paint dry unless you have the teams that are actively engaged in each of these areas, working in synergy together to focus on those sub-indicators, then you start to see increases. So I hope, this is a suggestion, I hope, for example, with Rangers, I know they get a lot of dog leash incidents, and that's not as compelling as when they have to, say, call the police for help. So I hope that we look at breaking those down, empowering and giving them agency to be a part of their own success, and then building their data sets with some sub-indicators under each one. My experience is, if you don't do that, you don't see improvement. So when we were focusing on graduation rate, it was always a sub-indicators under it, like, how many algebra classes were we offering at a school that didn't have the support to do that? So we had to get extra support for them, so we could have students take those two classes instead of just one chance at some other schools. My point is, I'm getting in the weeds with you right now to just say, I've never seen data move unless there's engagement and empowerment and agency given to the teams that are closer to the work, and that they have sub-indicators for each one. So that would be just a suggestion. I'll go ahead and stop there, but thank you, this has improved, and I do appreciate, I'm just looking for more, that's all, with more clarity, so we can start building more trust. Thanks.
Councilor Canall?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chair. Thank you all for being here. One quick off-topic, sorry if I was a little bit on edge to the presenters of the previous one. I think this is a super-important conversation, I wanted to get to it quickly, didn't mean to be rude over there to Director Angstrom and team. Appreciate all of you being here for this. I am a big supporter of the level of detail here. I agree with Councilor Ryan that you'll probably want to have some, maybe not the things that are on the first page, level of indicators, especially for those things that make these trailing indicators, which I think the algebra class is actually a really good example of. So I have a lot of questions, I'm going to keep these high-level at first, and then, if the degree of there's time. I do want to ask, you mentioned, Jessica, that the percentage for that top indicator, the percentage over time of operations funded by the Parks Levy, how would you all interpret that if that stayed the same versus went up year-over-year or went down year-over-year? The percentage of operations funded by the levy?
As stakeholders?
Yeah.
Yeah. I think that there's a fear that with Parks having a secured large amount, you know, money that is blended with general fund, that it may make cutting general fund to Parks easier. And so we've seen this over prior years, that Parks general fund percentage reductions has continued to go down compared to other bureaus. And so we just, we also just want to make sure that we're being transparent on the impact of that.
Yeah.
Because this is a five-year levy, and there's, you know, what happens at the end of that five years, and so we want to be transparent with city leadership, with community advocates. The reliance, if you're continuing to build and build and build reliance on a Parks levy, this number can serve so many purposes. I mean, the graph, because, you know, within the levy is a resolution to develop a sustainable plan, funding plan by 2028. I think that drives it. If you start to see that number, it's, again, another encouragement to say, hey, look at this. And again, each year, as you see it go up and you go through your larger budgeting process, it's a reminder of the impact of that.
Thanks. I just wanted to get that into the record, because I agree, and I think it would, for me, I'd like to see this number have a small decline over time, because that means that we're committing our general fund dollars to Parks as a core part of every part of our system, and not build reliance that can then be used to justify an even bigger levy down the line in six years. Okay, so I'm going to put a few of these into the record, just to run through it, but I will ask, I will ask that when you do the amount of grants and partnerships received, that you're tracking not only the dollars, but the number of individual sources of money to not create reliance on a few partners? I think that's really important. I would love to know the progress towards a schedule when we're talking about the maintenance projects which this levy funds, the degree to which those projects are being completed on schedule. And I think a percentage would work there. I appreciated Director Schmansky, your point about percentages versus raw numbers, and I think that should apply to acres of invasive species as well. I have no way of knowing if we are finding, because that can fluctuate over time. We've seen things come into our green spaces that have increased the overall amount of acres that might need to be treated. Similarly, I know you kind of have a placeholder here of measure of wildfire-related work, so I won't get into that, but I'm looking forward to that one, and I think this is a good place for Councilors Novick and I to weigh in as it relates to the public safety side, where we co-chair as well. With relation to Park Rangers, thank you for including this. I would love to see the number of calls, number of responses, maybe the way you have the stacked bar graph, where you're showing the amount and the percentage of that, or proportion of that, that are being responded to, and also the handoffs of those calls, and to who. Sometimes it's helpful to know if there's 10 calls coming in in a day, and four of them are being responded to by Park Rangers, and they're finishing the response themselves, and the other six did get a response, but Park Rangers were the first on the scene and then handed it off to PSR, or police, or fire, whoever. That would be really helpful for me. Eventually, we'd love to see, I think, a satisfaction rate on that, because in my personal experience, when people are describing what a good public safety response is, what they're usually describing is a Park Ranger response, and sometimes they say so, and sometimes they don't, but the other, other than that exact label, it sounds very similar. Just wanted to get that out there. Two questions. One, can you speak to, for the tree survival rates, are you only referring to park trees? And two, for, can you give us a little more info on the park inspection rating? And, you know, what will inform it, how you intend it, you know, is it a 1 to 10, 1 to 100, that sort of thing?
Certainly. So for the percentage tree survival rate, those would be trees planted by urban forestry. They may not all be on park properties, but they are the ones kind of planted and then tracked through their establishment period by urban forestry.
Or partners, correct.
Or partners, but tracked through urban forestry's program. That's right. For the park inspection score, so that is a checklist that looks at a number of things you might expect to see when you show up and walk through a park. So, you know, if a park has a playground and a pathway, it might look like, were there, was there graffiti or trash in the park or on the pathway? Was the pathway obscured by leaves that had not been raked yet? If there was a restroom, was the restroom clean when you entered it? Was the, you know, toilet and sink operational? So there's sort of a checklist of what a person could expect, would want to expect when they arrive at a park, and then what is there in reality? A portion of park sites through that program are assessed each year, and so this would be kind of a high-level reporting of how, kind of the score of how they did against that checklist.
Great. Forgot to make one suggestion, then I have one last question. So the suggestion is, I would love to know the times and days that people are utilizing recreation, not just the classes, but the access as part of how you track this, because in the general fund, we did shorten hours of it, of the morning sessions. I think it's not just more hours or better, sometimes we know that there's a need at a certain time, but we're not seeing utilization of a community center at those times, and I would love to have that sort of information. I don't, to the degree that, you know, the levy funds the particular program or center. And then the last question is, and this relates, I think, to Councilor Avalos's question, but I'm more curious on the non-geographic side. How are you intending to track equity in the KPIs? I don't see anything on here, and I understand this is a, you know, single page, that says, like, what the breakdown by race or ethnicity or gender are of folks that are coming and utilizing the things that the levy funds? And I know that's something that was in the description of a levy, but also something which can be tracked against the geography of the area in which that particular resource is. So if you can just speak to that, I'd really appreciate it, and then I'm done with that, Mr. Chair.
Yeah. I think that's a great question. We can further break down kind of the actuals, and we can show disparities in what we're seeing, but really, the outcome is where we're starting from in understanding the lack of equity in the park system. So what I'm, I'll give a specific example. So we know we don't have equal amounts of tree canopy across the city, so we can track, for example, a metric like where we're planting trees, and we can look at how that tracks with kind of the overall amount of tree canopy and where we have that in the city. And then, you know, the purpose of tracking both of those would be to say, if we know we're not equal from where we have tree canopy, are we planting trees in a way to help address that?
Okay, what about the non-geographic aspects of equity?
So we also have, you know, good survey information about utilization, preferences, who feels safe. We know from those surveys that there is differences among different populations for all of those kinds of things. We sort of, it's a little bit hard completely staying away from geography, because we do see geographic differences in those as well. So absolutely, we look at programming, we can break that down by sort of race, ethnicity. We also look at what types of programs are being utilized by which types of populations. We can look at kind of, yeah, do you have any other examples you would add?
No, I think we have really rich data, as far as I understand, on the programming side, who is using our programs at a really granular level, and that, I think, is a high-opportunity area to explore and tweak, to make sure we're really getting responsive programming to people who want it.
Thanks, I really appreciate all your work on this. I'll just note the distinction between programs and community center usage, because often the drop-in crowd gets less tracking.
Oh, good point, great point.
So, yeah, thanks. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
There may be more we can do there, there may be different ways we can measure that, so let's look into that.
Yeah.
We're at time. Diego, can we take another few minutes?
I'll check in with the support staff.
What?
I'll check in with the support teams.
Just quickly, I wanted to note, on the final indicator, continue free discounted recreation programs for families experiencing poverty, it seems to me that one thing we want to keep track of is the percentage of people who are taking advantage of this discount program compared to the percentage of people in the population, and I don't, like, I mean, if the poverty rate is 15%, what percent of people are taking advantage of the discount programs? And I think you might be sort of getting at that with saying that in X year, percent of access discount, oh, I'm sorry, X percent of Portlanders say cost is a barrier to accessing programs, so maybe you measure it against that. I don't know, do we actually ask people for what their income is, or do it's just sort of, I need help, so therefore, you're in the discount program?
I think we do ask, but we don't verify, and what you just said is slightly different. Overall percent of community members living in poverty, that could go in one of these boxes, instead of what we have.
Yeah, I just think it's worth talking about, like, whether there's some way to compare participation with population-level information. Councilor Ryan? Oh, one more thing. On wildfire risk, I know that, Sarah, you sent me some months ago, sort of amount of money that we spend that could be related to wildfires, and I don't know if that translates into a performance indicator, but I bet the council members, particularly Councilor Canall, based on what he just said, would be interested in seeing that information.
I think we should workshop that a little bit. We have a, it's not super satisfying, none of what we have is really satisfying, but maybe you can help us think about how to combine it or evolve it.
I will say that the stakeholders, several of them wanted to see something other than a dollar number attached to that.
Okay.
So that's where this placeholder has landed. There's some suggestions that came out that will be in the report.
Okay. Councilor Ryan?
Yes, thank you, Chair. And I know that there's so many parkies that are going to really grab onto this when they work on their sub-indicators, so we can really see it all in effort here. I think that the percentage of hours that restrooms are open is also a thing, because I've heard from people, I don't care if it's clean, if it's closed two hours later, that didn't help me when I was there with my children and they needed the restroom. I think my big-picture thing, Director Schmansky, is this. How much more increase will we need in earned revenue? How much more increase will we need in earned revenue from users, from investments in charity, from partners, that will be needed for us to avoid another cringey, unaffordable increase in the next levy? Like, our goal should be trying to not increase it, but be more like the children's levy and roll it over. No one sees economic forecasts saying that an affordability crisis in Portland's going to improve in the near future. And so, to me, the goal should be, the North Star is, how can we really lean in to increasing those revenue streams, which we failed to do over the last five years, which is why we had such a large increase to voters? What can we do to start to level that out?
Yeah, thank you for that. I strongly agree, and we're really excited to work with you and work really hard ourselves at maximizing revenue and other streams of investment that we have some influence over, and then staying in dialogue about pressures we don't, like cost increases that are city-wide. It's a big picture.
I think there's fixed costs that are predictable, and there's some that are not. And I think that that's weighed into this, so that means we have to go to here. So what would that increase need to look like? And I think all voters just want to see progress there. They want to see us at least get halfway to what the other top 10 parks in the country are experiencing when it comes to earned revenue and investments from charity and partners. We just have to, like, start to be more of a peer with them. Yeah, thank you.
Counselor, actually, I've been thinking about bringing forward a resolution, maybe that's not necessary, but sort of asking the Parks Bureau to present us with, given current operations and current funding sources, at the end of five years, are we, would we have to increase the levy? And what would we have to do? What are some options for things that we could do in terms of cutting services or increasing revenue, et cetera, to, but what we need, what are some options to what we need to do to get us to not increasing the levy? So I'd like to work with you on that. Thank you all very, very much, and thanks for your responsiveness to the various comments in this that some of us have made over the last weeks.
Can I just ask one?
Oh, yeah, sure. Sorry, Counselor.
Just one final thought, just like, what is the next step from here? Like, are we gonna, are you going to come back to us? Is it going to council for further discussion?
I think a written draft, or so the semi, the this-year final draft is going to go to council by the end of the year. I think not, I think you're not presenting, you're not presenting to council, you're just sending us something you're writing.
It's coming to councilors, but it will not be taken up by council.
Okay.
Oh, it's not in the next meeting.
Right, it's not in the next week's meeting. But obviously, I mean, so full council's going to be got something by the end of the year, but I expect us to have continuing conversations, you know, in the months to come. Our next meeting is Thursday, January 15th. At that meeting, we'll be considering the PSEF Climate Investment Plan. And I want to give a heads up to folks, and unfortunately, due to public meetings law, I can't have subsequent conversations with you about it in the meantime, but one thing that we were warned about by PSEF before is that they're going to be proposing a change to the Climate Investment Plan to take $15 million out of a program currently for electric vehicle financing that people aren't taking advantage of. And their proposal is going to be to move that into more energy efficiency investments in housing. And I am going to be talking with the PSEF committee and with PSEF staff and other stakeholders over the next few weeks, but I may personally bring forward a proposed change to that, because transportation is the biggest source of carbon emissions in the city, and we spend a small fraction of PSEF money on transportation. So taking $15 million out of transportation and putting into housing, where we're putting in a lot of money, is something that I, that doesn't sit well with me. So I'm going to be talking to PBOB and stakeholders about developing some alternatives to put it into transportation. So I just wanted to give people a heads up about that. Thank you all very much. Again, we're meeting Thursday, January 15th, and I now adjourn the meeting of the Climate Resilience and Land Use Committee.